Welcome. We'll get the meeting started, please join us for the pledging meetings. Okay, is there a motion for the approval of the agenda? Comments or questions? All in favor? Is there a motion for the approval of the minutes of June twenty second? Comments or questions? All in favor? Pat, could we please have a report of executive session?
Sure, the board met briefly immediately before this evening's meeting to discuss pending litigation and real estate matters. No decisions were made.
Thank you. Is there any public comment on non-agenda items? Anybody? Okay, there are no public comment on non-agenda items. We'll go right to announcements and upcoming events. So first of all, thanks to everyone and a shout out to the Marshall Creek Fire Company and Pushkill Fire Company for the participation in the dedication of the state marker. We normally every June have a display up in the community and cultural center regarding the blast of nineteen sixty-four, the Marshall Creek explosion of nineteen sixty-four. We have another display up because it's July, but we moved the display here. We put some things out here and then we'll put it up in the lobby. We'll put everything in the lobby. And the idea is if you know of any relatives of either the civilians or the firefighters that gave their lives that day, we would appreciate you putting them in touch with us because we're assembling something for next year. And then Mike, I think we have something for the Saturday?
Yeah, Community Day is the Saturday at Echo Park at twelve o'clock, twelve thirty. We should have over forty vendors, fire ambulance, medevac. So it should be a good day. It's only a nice day of the weekend.
And there's a flyer to take home with you too if you want to. Lehigh Valley Health Network is having an open house on July twenty second. That's over on the side as well. Meeting of the revitalized two oh nine committee will be July twenty fifth. Thursday, July twenty seventh, about two weeks from now, is when the staff will present to the public their mid-year report. So the staff gives several reports to the public per year, one in the beginning for the preview and then in the mid-year and then at year end. So we hope that you can join us on Thursday, the twenty seventh. On July twenty ninth, I believe that's a Saturday, the master gardeners will have a spring class at the community and cultural center about hydration. And you're welcome to visit Thomas Sando's art for the rest of July. And I don't know if Mike or Mark, if you have anything else? No? Okay, so grab yourself some flyers over on the side. Michelle, is there any correspondence?
No. I have, I have a first call.
Yes.
I got an email yesterday from Mr. Mickens, who's concerned about our noise ordinance and basically the continuous noise in his neighborhood. So he asked me to put it on record tonight and we discussed it. We did discuss it briefly in executive. But we're going to take a look at that ordinance. Currently, we can have a sound level of sixty decibels from seven AM to nine PM and a little less than that from nine PM to seven AM. But it doesn't, our ordinance doesn't reference anywhere the continuous playing of music or whatever the noise might be coming from that house. So as you all know, there's several different kinds of noises are from generators going during power outages, whatnot. So it's something we need to look at and make a decision on if we repeal our noise ordinance and make it part of our nuisance ordinance or just start all over with another noise ordinance. But I've had the same problem at my house this spring already and maybe some of you have had a problem as well with noise coming from a neighbor that you just can't come to a decent agreement about. So we need to look at that and over the next month or two, we'll work with the zoning group to do that until this year, of course. Thank you.
Thank you. There being no more correspondence, we'll move down to the bid opening and possible award. So Mike, I think you have some bids for pump station number eight?
Yep. So, first one, from the mayor, the lease, like a man. Wommy Glenn, contracted.
Their bid is one hundred and eight thousand three hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Excellent pioneer. Their bid is one hundred and eighteen thousand three forty-seven. Right here, I got an M D need. Their bid is one hundred and twenty-seven thousand one hundred and thirty-five dollars. So I will make a motion to receive these bids for review.
Second. Any comments or questions?
When you have a bid made, does it specifically chosen because of the lowest bid?
Not necessarily. Actually, all these, for one reason or another, can be rejected. Could be past performance, not good or what have you. So it's not, I mean, obviously price is a major consideration, but you know, performance is certainly important.
Thank you. This is to the place the pipe in the wet well, I mean, the job of it to restore the pump station. So motion's been made and beckoned in. Any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, so that brings us to our public hearing and a possible decision regarding the proposed property maintenance ordinance. So I would make a motion to open the public hearing.
Sorry.
Comments or questions? All in favor? Okay. So Pat, would you like to take away?
Sure. So the property maintenance ordinance has been advertised for a public hearing this evening. You just opened the public hearing. As you recall, this ordinance or a draft of this ordinance had a public hearing previously at some time in the April, May timeframe. You had a public hearing. There were a number of comments from the public with respect to the proposed ordinance. Since that time, you've discussed it at another public meeting. We've made revisions and additions to the ordinance to address a number of the comments from the public. And this has been advertised pursuant to the second class township code for again, holding a public hearing. And thereafter, if the board is in a position to proceed with adopting the ordinance as written. So I don't know if you wanted to go through the proposed ordinance that's been advertised for a public hearing this evening in detail or if you wanted to see if there's any public comment on it at this point. I'll let it up to the board how you want it to proceed.
I'll just take comments.
Yeah, there's copies for anyone who might need some over on the side. If you'd like to grab a copy. If folks would like to make public comment, we ask that you identify this page and section number so that we can all follow along. Hopefully, everybody had a chance to go over this. As Pat said, we advertised this and had this out on our website and all different places so that people could view it. Over on the side, you could see all the different ways that we've contacted the public to let them know about this public hearing. And every point of contact, we included a link and a method with which to get the actual ordinance so that the public could review it. So we also, once again, placed copies of others who've had property maintenance ordinances here in Monroe County. About half the municipalities already have one, some as early as nineteen ninety-seven and two thousand and six and such. So that's just a bit of a background. So and I think what I'm hearing from Mike and I haven't heard from you, Mark, yet, you just, would you like to just? Yeah, we'll just receive comments. I think it's pretty self-explanatory what's been done. So, who would like to be recognized for, yes, this is.
On letter D.
What?
One thirty-four dash seven. Yard, open lot, armenia.
One thirty-four. Okay, so one thirty-four dash, so, seven, page five.
Six, six.
Page six.
Oh, D, six. Sorry. You suck my language.
What is the distance on each side of the road for the right of way for the township? Like, how much distance can they widen the road? From say what it is now to, if they want to widen road, how many feet do they, can they take?
I mean, yeah.
On each side?
Right. It could be, it differs. I don't want to be invasive.
Yeah, why does it differ?
Well, it differs in certain locations. It differs.
Why does it differ in certain?
It's the categorization of the roads. So, you know, any, any road system, right? The more local, the more isolated is, the less traffic tends to be a narrower right of way because the carway went through the road doesn't actually is wide. I mean, just, you know, you can then compare it to something like a two oh nine, right? Obviously, that's a state road. It's not township road, right? But far more traffic, larger carway width, larger right of way width. But the same thing applies to township roads, right? There's certain ones that are more arterial or collectors, what we call them. And then there's other local that are used by a few people. So that's why it does vary.
What's the range?
I can get that for you. No one knows it off the top of their head.
You've admitted from the center line. Right. Correct.
The local.
Right.
I mean, it was.
I mean, I mean, a brief answer, Pat, honestly, I'd guess that I'd probably five feet on the other side if you want to. One, might not think that would be, but there'd be no reason for it. Not gonna make a local road two lanes, get away.
Sorry, I was in the wrong code. I was in the wrong code.
It is, it is funny too, because I know the road you go on that, and I know we did some work on COBAT years ago. We found in one spot, the center line was only five feet from the edge of the road. But because the road had been widened and went out over the years, it sort of led to one direction.
Right.
It was a straight road.
Correct.
Instead of having a curve or bend in that spot of the road, a straight road. So I don't know how that works.
You know, it's hard to say what would be specific.
So the ultimate right of ways on, on the roads vary from fifty feet total. So it would be twenty-five from the center of the road.
So the widest the road can get at this point?
Goes from fifty feet up to eighty feet, depending on the type of road. So a local street, your more local roads where, you know, residential neighborhoods.
Why is this gonna ever be a thing?
widest on an arterial road, which was the more heavily trafficked road would be eighty feet.
So with D, it says that the owner has to keep the trimming back at least two feet from the roadway and up to, I don't understand that anyone. It says tree branches, shrubs, weeds trimmed back from the roadway edge at least two feet.
Right.
Then it says from the roadway pavement and up and up, at least thirteen feet.
Right.
That's up. High.
Oh, oh.
Right.
I was confused on that as well.
Yeah, that's not very.
Yeah.
It's, it's.
Clear, but I get it now. So an overhanging tree.
Yes.
Right.
So, what I'm wondering is, why is the homeowner responsible for this when maybe two years later, they don't even own those two feet? Because they've been, the road's been widened. So now they're two feet in to be clearing their tree branches, shrubs and weeds.
Well, I mean, in the extreme, I guess, if the road was widened, you know, could you say, well, I didn't have to cut the grass for the last ten years or?
Well.
But.
It's always the, the owner of the property immediately adjacent to the road is responsible for that area. Now, sometimes even if it's, it may not be, it may be easement right of way, meaning the township may have an easement right of way over that portion of the property. But it's still the, the owner of the property is still the resident, meaning they're still responsible for that piece of property. We may just have an easement over it for the right of way associated with whether it be the road, sidewalk, curving, stormwater, whatever. But it's not our, it could be, it's not necessarily our property. We would just have an easement right over it.
My, my, well, like I have a choice. You know, when you come along the line of the road, I can't say I don't want you to widen the road. You're widening anyway.
We also do some trimming on public works.
Yeah, we do.
Yeah. We do.
That's for sure. Okay, just a question.
Thank you, Pat. So a participant on Zoom has a question. Phyllis, Phyllis, how near Morris, if you could unmute yourself and make your comment or question?
Thank you, Annette. Can you hear me? Okay, I apologize. I do not have the ordinance in front of me. But there's a section that talks about the drainage, drainage ditch on your properties. I think it's like around item number O or something.
Eighty?
No, no, same page, letter D.
Letter D.
Okay. Anyway, so I'm on Laurel Ridge Road. My house has a drainage ditch alongside my house. You guys okay?
Yeah.
There's a drainage ditch from the block behind me, which is Skyview, that comes down the hill alongside my property and then across the front of my property. The front of my property, I, I clean out on a regular basis. But every once in a while, I call the township to come and, and just kind of like run the plow through it or whatever, just to clean it up. And they've been doing that for me. The ditch alongside the house that goes up the hill, I clean out maybe once every five or six years, my section of it. But the problem is that it's gotten so overgrown, plus with all the rains and everything that we're having, all the debris from the, from Skyview and all the way up, like higher up than I am, comes down the side, the side drain and ends up in front of my house because mine's the lowest spot. Now, the drain, the culvert drain actually goes down the block into other properties and across the street and down around the culversack or whatever. But it seems that I'm the low spot at this point, so I get all the garbage in my ditch. And there's only so much I can do. I'm getting too old to be sitting there playing with poison ivy and everything else in that ditch. And I'm just concerned that I'm going to be held liable for the ditch alongside my house, which I really can't touch at this point. I don't have, I don't have the, the health to do it and I don't have the money to have somebody come. And then even if I did clean it out, what do I do with all that debris that's there? The trees that have come down, the weeds that have grown, the garbage that occasionally falls out of a garbage truck or a garbage can. So I'm just concerned that I'm going to get stuck. I'm going to, I may get stuck picking up everybody else's garbage just because the drain is alongside and in front of my house. So I just wanted to make that comment. And just, and while I'm on that subject, the ditch makes it very, very difficult for me to put leaves out in the fall. Because what happens is I have to actually blow all the leaves down my driveway and then back out onto the street. And then more often than not, it usually gets windy or it rains before they, you get, the township is able to pick up the leaves and the leaves blow back into the ditch in front of my house. So I just wanted to make that comment to see if there was anything that you guys could do. I would love if you guys would put like a culvert pipe there for me, but I think that would probably be too expensive. But I just don't know what else to do with this at this point because there's only so much I can do at my age at this point.
All right. Well, thank you for your comment. We'll, we'll talk about that and see what can be done. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Yes, and?
How do you deal with the two sections that conflict with each other? One thirty-four seven, E and F?
Okay, so.
Clearly, I was infected with a stream pond regret that.
Right.
Fifty feet, you can't cut anything, but yet? Everything's supposed to be, that's short.
Well, that takes, it's over E.
It says at the end of that.
Yeah, it actually does say in the event of a conflict.
It says that there's a conflict. Provision which is more restricted, which establishes the higher standard shop as well.
Right, but you're supposed to deal with the most restrictive.
Right. But one says you can't do it and the other one says you shouldn't do it.
Well, so you're talking about the fifty foot buffer where you're not supposed to touch the vegetation from a creek or probably other wetland or pond. The more restrictive one is the one that says you can't touch it, right?
Does, does that mean, is that taken literally that your house is within fifty feet of a wetland? You can't take any of that vegetation away. You can't cut a tree down with a firewood or anything?
So here's the thing, that, that is already in existence. I don't think that, I don't think this property maintenance code is, is, because if you look at that, that's referencing the stormwater management ordinance. It's already in existence. So that, that restriction on the fifty foot, which is, I believe, the inner. Or.
It's eight.
But that's already in place. So this isn't changing anything with respect to that.
I think if anything happens, there are to warn the person who's there enforcing it.
Right.
Just make sure they're putting down something clearly telling that.
Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Hi, Cheryl, page four, building instructions, one thirty-four dash six. Mostly just one word and then paragons, so I've been very long run on sentence.
I'm sorry, can you say it again? See?
Yes, page four, building instructions, one thirty-four dash six, under C. I've had issues with this, the owners of any and all unoccupied doors and structures, which may require the de novo. The point of being classified as unoccupied assets, defined here and becomes a two, and the word severe health and was safety. So what is that? What I would have to get a structural engineer to determine that? There's that little, little mush, I think, severe. I mean, I have a dilapidated building adjacent to me that the person abandoned was going to, you know, redo the building and just left it with all sorts of debris outside. I mean, it hasn't been moving for thirty years, but now it's a mess because this person gutted it.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think it's, it's always going to be a case by case, right? I mean, if a structure is missing a roof, that's obvious. If there's a structure that has significant foundation issues or structural support issues, that's more of a probably an engineer, or at least the code official is going to have to do a pretty more in-depth investigation as to the structural integrity of the building.
Yeah, but I mean, if it wasn't severe, then this doesn't apply us.
So I would say that it would be at the discretion of the code enforcement official to make the determination if it's severe. And then it would be up to the property owner to argue or prove that it's not. So similarly, if we were to send an enforcement on any other section of our ordinances or codes and, you know, assess that there's an issue with the property. You know, a lot of times in the past, we've said, you know, you've created a junkyard on your property. Well, it's the, the owner can say it's not a junkyard. You know, these are my collections, whatever they want to say, right? So it would be their, their way, they'd have to come back and make that argument to the township. So if we were to determine that it's in severe dilapidated state and the owner wanted to argue that it's not, they would have that right to do so.
But the building, it doesn't appear to be habitable because the sewage enforcement officer was there and the sewage tank is in the foundation and the building inside the building. So that would be severe.
What you're describing.
Well, that's the way it was built.
Yeah.
It's collapsed.
Well, I don't know if it's collapsed. I'm just saying the set of the tank itself.
Right.
Is in the building.
Yeah, and again, again, this is going to be a case by case, depending upon the investigation.
So it's not a habitable building and be code wise.
Right.
Plus, there's debris all over the place when they, when he gutted that building. I mean, it's complete disarray.
Right.
There's no power to it. The person, apparently no intention of, of re, of re, you know, redesign or rebuilding the building, sitting there as an ice car. It's old and, you know, the T one eleven.
Has this been submitted to the township?
I've taken pictures of it and brought it to the township.
Okay, so we'll definitely look into it. And I don't know if it was something that we were waiting on to see if this property maintenance code would pass, if it was something that we could apply this to, but we'll definitely look into it.
Okay, well, I thought there was a building ordinance like this in the past. I didn't think this was that new, except for the words severe.
Right. Well, there, there are several codes and ordinances, you know, that we've used in the past. The idea of the property maintenance code was to be able to have a comprehensive code that allows us to address several issues on the property. So there may be a building code violation that would be a safety hazard. There could be a, an aspect of a nuisance code that would be a violation and these all fall under different codes in our ordinance. So when we.
Yeah, I was just hoping that someone at some point in time would come and take a look at it.
Oh, no, absolutely.
Because I have photos of it. I mean, it's, it's not like you're going up there and it's a pristine, but then I have photographs.
We will look into it.
So I was just like, the words severe, I thought was a little over the top. And I, I just thought that that was a little bit, you know, over the water again, I had that term.
Thank you. Anyone else have any other comments or questions? Okay. So as Pat had explained before, we had several public hearings as well as kept this on and down in the agenda for a public meeting. And we had the public hearings to hear from the public, we heard from the public, incorporated comments and ideas into this new version.
uh, ideas into this new uh, version. One of the things we had heard over several meetings was a concern for uh, residents who, and we just heard from uh, Phyllis tonight who expressed, you know, what if I am physically unable to take care of my property or what if I don't have the financial means to it? So uh, tonight we have uh, two uh, and more uh, guests in the audience who came to speak to us tonight. We have Tom Campbell from United Way. Um, and Scott Fabian from Habitat and Kelly Cammer from Habitat of, from of Humanity. Who will speak to us about um, grants and different things that the county has uh, that are available to folks uh, to help them with this. So and again, if you know of somebody whose property is in um, a sad state and they don't have the means, if you contact the township, we're happy to place that individual uh, in contact with those agencies that are designed to help them. So, so I don't know who would like to speak first.
Mr. Karen, everyone, can we obviously start with Tom folks who are maybe no, uh, income restricted or whatever the case might be. Okay, United Way, putting it up to the other way, basically provides a lot of different services for people who are in rental situations and homeowners as well. But particularly rentals. But because we also do touch on homeowners as well, we have several risks that some of the services you can turn into. If you're having trouble basically making repairs that might be necessary, uh, they might have been uncovered. So there are a couple of different organizations that can come to help, that can come to help. Um, contact is one of those, first on our list, but I'm going to pass that over to Kelly. Uh, but let me tell you something, we got this. Uh, the county actually has a home rehab program. Uh, I have sheets about it over, over here on the table. Uh, I do want to basically, you know, that it is mostly grants, there's also some loan aspects to it. But depending upon what your income levels are, the condition of property that you find ones are, uh, so the uh the rural county redevelopment authority managing that program, there's, it's a lot, what the funding function is saying. The hard part about it is that we weren't going to be able to use state funds, they have to go through this whole covenant process of incorporating contractors, it can take a while. There's a good sized waiting list. So while I'm putting this list and contacts over on the table, you keep in mind that if I take a walk, we will actually start working with it. Some of the others that are available, um, if you are senior, um, I recommend contacting the area agency on Asian, they have a group called Senior Support Services, uh, that is mostly volunteers. If you have a small project such as your deck is no longer passing, clothing is unsafe. They may be able to line up volunteers to help with that and either it might even be some of the grant or it might be, you would have maybe data materials. But there is some helpful on the road funds. Right now, actually, the volunteer group that does that is on hiatus, but they hopefully are having the back in place again by this fall. And finally, there is Pennsylvania Housing Finance Agency, um, they have a number of different programs, they have one called a Home Style Renovation Program. So if your home may need a lot more, uh, you can actually go to a special refinancing program that they have. Mobile banks might not offer loans, they'll let you incorporate the future value of your house after you do the repairs and or even improvements. This program, Pennsylvania Housing Finance Agency has, does offer that. We also have one percent loans for energy efficiency. Well, what does that mean? That means if your windows are problem, problem with passing, maybe you've got broken windows, whatever the case may be. That may be something you can use the energy efficiency loan or grant for. Uh, then there's also the Penn West homeowners, the subject program, if you're having problems with the subject system and you've got issues that might be bottomed, the safety hazard free stuff, or again, an ordinance violation, there's some special programs that the PHFA offers for that. So uh, that's the big ones. There's also, starting just this year, again, we put windows in the big ones, doors, skylights, anything along those lines. Again, there's our energy efficiency improvements, there is new tax program in the commonplace that basically allows you tax, tax credits. A tax credit in just a reduction on what your income is, it means that if you put in this, these changes and you pay somebody to do it, you could actually get that taken off of your taxes. So if you owe two thousand dollars in taxes, there's a formula, you might be able to get as much as twelve hundred dollars off the amount that you owe in taxes. So again, I will put this list over the table as well as the county redevelopment's uh, list over the table. Um, and also at the bottom, mostly, mostly, right away is, you know, there's contact information, if you went and some other types of help. And that, I hope to get to know Kelly about contact.
Thank you. Hi, uh, my name's Kelly Cammer, I'm the executive director of London County Habitat for Humanity. So actually, we're doing thirty home repairs picture for homeowners with limited income. So to qualify for our home preservation program, you have to, for example, a one-person household has to earn less than thirty-eight thousand six hundred. Two people would earn less than forty-four thousand one hundred. Uh, you have to be a homeowner for at least two years and you have to get paid on your taxes, mortgage and insurance. If they're not, give us a call, we might be able to help you get that straight out. Um, the repairs are for safety and health, which can include a lot of things, which could be trees, we do do tree cutting. We won't maintain your trees, but that may include in your home repairs project, um, we do roofs, door scores, windows, new appliances, um, all kinds of things like that. One program that we, well, obviously, you know, with home preservation, you aren't required to pay back the cost of materials, but volunteers do the labor. So the projects end up being a lot lower cost than if you pay the contractor. Um, also, uh, for people that still might need help to afford the projects. A lot of times we fly through USDA, United States Department of Agriculture offers grants. So if you're over age sixty-two and earn up to sixteen thousand five hundred dollars a year, you can get a one-time grant from the USDA for ten thousand dollars. You don't have to pay it back. Um, and that's for home repairs. So uh, we would help you to apply for that. I don't have any flyers, but I'll leave some of my work over on the table. If anyone's interested or you don't believe they need the homework here.
Thank you, Kelly. I put your call in recognition about what she did.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Tom and Kelly. Does anyone have any questions for Tom and Kelly? Okay, thank you very much for coming tonight and sharing this with us. Yeah, we'll have this available here. Uh, see anybody new on Zoom? Does anyone else have any comments or questions? Because it's ripe for action.
Well, now you can close the public hearing.
Yeah.
And then if the board wants to entertain a motion with the ordinance, it would be appropriate.
Hey, I would make a motion to close the public hearing.
Sure.
Comments or questions? All in favor?
Right.
Hi. Okay, I would make a motion to adopt ordinance number uh, two thirty-nine. The motion in a second, any comments or questions? All in favor?
Right.
Hi. Okay. Thank you very much. And that brings us to our president's report.
Okay, motion somewhere general count, one hundred and thirty-three thousand seven hundred and seventy-three dollars and two cents.
Well, second, uh, comments or questions? All in favor?
Motion somewhere sure count, fifty-four thousand four hundred and fifty-eight dollars and sixty-four cents.
Second, comments or questions? All in favor?
Motion somewhere golf counting, eighteen thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars and thirty-eight cents.
Third. Comments or questions? All in favor? Thank you. Okay, solutions report.
Uh, thank you. There are two items under my report this evening. The first one is a, a solar farm proposed ordinance amendment to the zoning ordinance. Uh, the board may recall, you inquired me about a potential zoning ordinance amendment to account for some additional regulations or uses associated with solar uh, energy systems. So what this ordinance does, it would amend the zoning ordinance of the township, providing for two distinct uses. One, an accessory solar energy system, which are the types of the solar energy systems that private residences use on their houses for primarily purposes of providing energy associated with the solar system for that property, for that dwelling. And then it also provides for a uh, principal um, solar energy system, which is more of the uh, solar farms for commercial industrial type uses, which are primarily used for creating energy from the solar system for off-premise use, for off-premise uh, energy uh, requirements. Uh, so this is, what's before you is I put together a draft zoning ordinance amendment uh, providing for those two uses, amending the existing code ordinances uh, for Minnissmith Field Township. It is, this is not a public hearing, this is simply for your information and discussion, if you wanted to take the next step and maybe move it forward or even further. Uh, one thing I will note is that the principal solar energy systems as it currently reads would be permitted in the, I believe I have it in the industrial, uh, the commercial industrial zoning district as a conditional use. Uh, we didn't really discuss that when you asked me to do this, as to what zoning district you wanted it to be in, um, but that's that's the way it currently reads. And obviously that can be changed as, at the direction of the board.
Of page two. The, yeah, page two at the, at the top, under the principal use. Because the prin- the principal solar energy would be more like a utility, right? If we, we, yeah.
The, the distinct, the real distinction is for the principal solar energy system, the power that's generated is primarily for off-site use. So they're selling, right? They're selling it off premise. The accessory solar energy system are
Accessory to existing complex.
People that put on the roofs.
Structure, yeah.
Yep.
So does the board have any comments on where you would like to see something that would be a principal solar energy aside from the industrial district?
And you're saying it's, it's a conditional use and the other?
Now, now, the
Conditional reduction.
For, yeah.
Correct.
In the
Principal, the principal. Solar energy system.
Right.
As opposed to allowing it throughout the entire.
Right. Well, that's a massive thing that is a conditional use and the other.
No.
It's only, he has it only in the industrial district. As, as a conditional use.
This, the, the principal solar energy system as proposed in this ordinance would only be allowed by conditional use in the commercial industrial.
Right.
The accessory solar energy systems, they would be permitted as accessory use in all zoning districts.
So, so that's what people are currently doing. This is just kind of regulating. Right, this is not a solid.
This is correct.
Right.
You do have some language in your zoning warrants with respect to solar systems. This designates the two separate types. One, the accessory type for on-premise use. One is the more what, what I believe Mike just indicated, the solar farm for off-premise use.
Because we didn't have it before, if somebody wanted to do that.
Well, we, well, we have the supplemental. And that's also covered, the accessory, that's also covered by the building code. Right. Right, like some of this word says, the word I think you're very.
Oh, yeah, they have to comply with the, the appropriate building code.
We're not recreating the wheel.
No, I think the building code is actually referenced in here, they have to comply with whatever uh, building code requirements are associated with whatever improvement they're putting on or in.
Also, this has the section on the decommissioning with this. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand up. Yes.
Typically, the residential solar system, you can sell the excess due to the grid and, and you're essentially selling it to other people. Now, if you had a situation where you had a pretty large roof surface and you only use a very small portion, are you going to get in trouble if you sell more than you use?
No, because it's an accessory to the primary. It would be on the primary building and this is an accessory used to your primary building. The, the solar farm is not an accessory used to any building, it's just there as a farm.
No, but if, depending on the wording, if you have a, if you know, if you have a, a large, I mean, electricity that you're selling, depending on the wording, somebody could consider that then a farm instead of just a residential.
No, I think the intent in your situation, I think what he's saying is if, if the house has a significantly large roof, right, and the energy that it produces, it actually may be sixty percent they're selling back because they're only using forty.
Right.
I think in that, in that situation, it's still accessory use, it just so happens that they're lucky and they're selling more back. Uh, but primarily, it's primarily used for on-premise.
Had like a large garage or warehouse and, and like you say, they're selling seventy-five percent, using twenty-five percent. You know, the wording is not uh, clear.
Well, on the, on the other, what, to your point, what if they had a large parcel? What if they had kind of fifteen acres then? Wanted to do an acre. I mean, I could see it going on, you do the barn, okay, that's an accessory structure.
I mean, a roof is one thing, but yeah, I could put three acres and you use the garage, use it on several rest.
Yeah, I mean, I could look to see if that can be, there might be provisions, I'm kind of reading right now to see if it is covered. It might, it, it, I would suspect it's already covered, but uh, so your concern is a large property, uh, that even though they have a residence, a residence on a property that they clear cut or they already have a field and they just put up a huge solar farm. I think in that scenario, that scenario, I think the, the position of the attach would be there, this is a, that will be a principal solar, yeah, they're servicing property, but depending upon the size of what they're putting in in the field. The intent is really to service off-prep, off-premise. On page three. Because they don't need to put solar panels up over acres and acres of just to serve their property. Right. Now, I think that would be a clear
Right.
distinction.
And here's how I could talk about it, it's in article three on page three, C. The person that, that also chooses shall primarily serve onsite generation. Right. So does that mean you can't sell more than use?
I don't, I don't think the township is going to be looking that closely at people's energy bills and that, because I, my understanding of the way of
Where's this even at, sir? I don't understand why.
Uh, I was asked to put, uh, draft the ordinance together.
The, the board decided this at one session, when we looked at, when we looked at a spreadsheet of parcels that were at red. So, um, I don't think you would want a prime piece of, um.
We have nothing irregular.
Right.
Right. So then you want to put up a solar.
Okay. Well, but how are you treating it or not?
Well, it's concerning, huh?
As a conditional use, we could place reasonable conditions on it. Whereas before, we would, we did not have the ability to place reasonable condition.
We didn't have, we didn't have the ability to say that couldn't put it on our, our grid.
Right.
Really? Oh, you can't.
No, you can't, you have an I.
If you have a farmer, you can. That's what we just okayed, no.
No, because it's not a principle.
That would be an accessory, we were talking about an accessory. So we're
Mark, you're, you're asking, why do we need the accessory part of this?
Correct.
Do you want to put it on, are we doing anything more than BCO, just approving plans?
Uh. I guess I can, if, if you're, if you're not looking to incorporate an accessory solar energy system, we can, I can look about removing that if that's
Uh, the, the, the primary principle, whatever.
Well, what do we have that guides the accessory use?
The building.
Building claim.
You want to put solar panels on your barn now.
Right.
You go to the zoning department, you get permits.
You go to the zoning department, you give permits, you put your zoning-
There's a separate second for it already in our just size. Or maximum, not the building code in our zoning work it. What it was missing, it was missing because uh-
I, I-
It was missing, you should, that's a belief.
I think that's in your book, John, I- I think, I think this is, I think that's a fear, this both when you hear for the-
Right. Well, we-
No?
Could deny it in that way. Yes.
Just gonna bunch it and then stick out all the thought about accessory.
So, uh, again, really, I was asked to put this together and the intent was for you to discuss it, let me know if you wanted to take the next text. Am I, am I hearing that maybe you, you want to remove the reference for the accessory solar energy system and, and only address the principal solar energy system? Is that, is that what I'm hearing? I mean, I would just suggest maybe looking through uh-
Yeah, I mean, I-
I, I've got it.
Because there are certain things in there that's probably not covered with the building code, meaning like the buffers, if, you know, prohibited in the front yard. Right. Certain things that the building code might not address that are addressed in here.
Well, uh, I'd like to review with that.
Yeah.
Yes, because our zoning ordinance already has this, has solar in it. It's just missing some definitions and doesn't have the other things that had put in this. So I would want to compare it before we said, just get rid of the accessory.
The, the other thought that I would throw out there that I just thought of is that if you are referencing an accessory use for zoning, right? Even if it's rooftop, um, then they would have to get a zoning permit in addition to the building permit. Where now, if it's a rooftop solar system, a zoning permit is not required. So. That would be in, you know, I, I come somewhat agree with Mike, but I don't know that we have to address accessory um, solar systems in zoning. Um, it is addressed whenever they do a ground map system because they've changed the footprint of the land. So any structure on land requires a zoning permit already. So that section of solar panels on your land requires that zoning permit, just under zoning, requiring, you know, any structure.
So we just need to see what we ordered to address in the current zone. If we can't put them in the front yard in the current zone, I don't need to repeat it.
Um. Yeah, I mean, your, your, any accessory structure cannot be within your front yard setback. So with-
Right now, right now, the way, pretty sure, right now, the way solar energy system is defined in your zoning ordinance is as an accessory use. Make sure.
So round out solar panel to the same shit.
Essentially.
Pretty same blood.
Yeah, solar energy system is currently defined as accessory devices and equipment designed to collect solar power and convert same into usable energy. So you currently have a definition for solar energies or solar energy system in the zoning ordinance. It's just specific to accessory devices, equipment.
Mm-hmm.
We didn't have the definitions for, it, it mentions utility in here. And um, so somebody would have been able to put up a solar farm and call it a utility, which is why we wanted to get another uh ordinance, your solar energy.
Yeah, I do agree that you would need something in your ordinance with regard to the primary use.
Yes.
Yeah.
Agreed.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, oh. So I think we said with the public hearing for this for August.
Well, why don't we, why don't you wait? Because, you know, there was just a pretty lengthy discussion.
I'm just saying, we originally said we were going to do this on August.
Gotcha.
Uh, ten, I think. So if we're going to review this.
We can review it for a second, we need to go on.
Right, right. And we can come back and then and then look at this, okay? Alright.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, so what I'll do is I'll revisit this and revise it based on the discussion this evening. Um, and I'll recirculate it and then it can be brought up again in a following meeting at the committee support.
Sounds good, sounds good, thank you.
Sure. The next item on my report is the Mount Nevo apartment space two authorization uh for the conditional use public hearing. So the township did receive an application for Mount Nevo apartment space two. Uh, it's permitted by conditional use in the zoning ordinance. So uh, we need to schedule that for a public hearing before the board within sixty days of June twenty-one, twenty twenty-three, which is when it was submitted to the township. Uh, is there a, we do need to advertise it for two successive weeks uh before the meeting where you hold it. So your next meeting, we won't be able to. So the first meeting would be ten.
The August.
Uh, probably your first or second meeting in August, probably your first based upon August ten. Look at that.
They didn't need to get a phone up to see the county, you know.
Uh.
We need a couple more.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Uh, so it looks like the first uh meeting in August, which would be August tenth, uh would be the first time you can get the board, is that the date that the ta- that the board would wish to advertise this for?
Sure.
Alright.
Sounds good.
And that's all I have from my report unless there's any specific questions or comments in the board to read.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, engineers report.
Alright, I have uh just one item for tonight. Um, so with the emergency generators job for the uh Bush Pilgrim pump stations, six generators, those have been ordered. Um, got a quote from Critical Systems for the uh installation of those six generators once they arrive. Um, their quote came in at forty-one thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, we interacted with them early in the process. They were the ones that kind of walked down each of these locations with us, helped sizing the generators and um, coordinating with uh Cooper Electric, who the generators were ordered through, so they're very familiar with it. Um, and the, the, the cost that they provided here is based on prevailing wages. Um, and you know, with that accounted for is generally consistent with the original quote they gave us a couple of years ago. So, um, I'm comfortable recommending moving forward with them if the board supervisors is comfortable with that.
I would make a ma- make a motion to accept this call. Do I hear a motion to accept this call?
You may.
I will. You got a second, so alright. Any comments or questions?
I have those questions then, yep. Um, there's six different locations here, correct? I presume we're gonna see, treat this as six projects? They're, they're, they're understanding that? I mean, this is not gonna happen.
As in, well, I guess what's, what's the reason for breaking up? You're saying because of the amount with the-
No, no, I'm not worried about the amount. I'm, I'm, I'm concerned about timing of the work. We're gonna be able to do six at one time.
Right, as far as the installation, as far as for the concrete pad construction, getting that in.
Yeah.
Correct, right. So as far as the last update I got from Taylor, I do know that they're in the process of manufacturing them. I haven't gotten more, like over the past few weeks, Taylor has not provided more recent update on when to expect these.
Okay.
Uh, I think we could hold off on Critical Systems and I could talk to him to have a phase properly, so it's not, you know, where he's not getting out in front of you, because he can't, you know, we're not setting these things until the pads are placed, but-
Right, and then, and then, so everyone's aware, the payment is gonna be a third, a third, a third based on one of six project. I'm not gonna give a third of forty-two thousand dollars right now. I'm gonna give a, I'll give a third when it starts.
How quickly will this, will this happen if?
Well, we haven't had a test.
Right, right. And I asked when they would get here and Ben had thought a few months from now.
So I don't know, one of those things where it's-
Right.
Giving, it, it's uh accepting the pricing of the proposal and uh with confirmation and verification of payment terms.
Yeah.
I, 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 I'd asked him that and I didn't get a, a response as to what exactly, what third, what the time was.
I'm fine with it, but again, it's gonna be broken up by project.
Understood.
Okay.
So we have a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? Yes, sir.
We're reminded this, I would be, you have to pay it outside. You know, digging it out, which is instead of, I'm sure it's giving money that, you know, in the great, promote the project. Right.
Yeah, and to clarify, public works is who's going to be doing the concrete pads?
Right.
Because it saves money over having the contractor do them. So I can understand the concern on timing.
And then again, I mean, if we can't get these generated until November, we will.
It's gonna sit till spring.
You know, you're talking, that's a April project.
Right. Yep.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions?
Oh, I'll just pop it forward.
On this, on this motion, it was been a motion and a second. Okay, uh, all in favor?
Alright.
Hi. Alright. Anything?
That's it?
One engineer's report. Okay, old business, back to you, Mike, on this seal pro bid.
Okay, so um, we reviewed the bids that we received from Pokeno Spray Patch and AMS. Um, and based on uh the pricing that we received to stay within budget, we're gonna cut the scope back a little bit. Um, so um, Pokeno Spray Patch being a low bidder, I make a motion to award Pokeno Spray Patch Bow Lane or Viewers Lane Coral Court Custom Drive uh with property. And that would be a total of forty thousand five hundred and fifty-two dollars and seventy-three cents.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Alright.
Right. And Mike, I think you wanted to do something on parks.
Yeah, just authorized Secretary to advertise for Parks and Rec Committee Member. Then send some to Chrissy Philman, thank you, sir.
On second, any comments or questions? All in favor or not? But Mark, I think you have something.
Sure. Frank, I'm hoping I can zone off to uh file a civil complaint against property number two forty-six, Hall of Route, say.
Comments or questions? All in favor or not? Okay, that brings us to public comments.
I just had one, one final question.
Mister, only.
Yes, and according to the provisions of property's new ordinance, that's to be enacted by the page. Uh, I just don't understand the logistics, is there gonna, is that an unfunded mandate or is there gonna be additional people, uh, male or female, who's the, the one zoning officer that I, I know of? I mean, isn't there like thirty thousand people now?
In the township?
No. No.
So we have six thousand homes and about sixteen thousand residents.
Okay, well, yeah.
Yeah. So that can be handled by one person.
I was just curious of the logistics, I have that.
Well, uh, again, I mean, the zoning, the zoning office isn't uh, uh, patrolling.
No, I, I, I know, I know, she, like, is consulting, there's a call, consulting company and she, it's just, you know, you pay them, you know, for that, for that work.
So it's, it's also a plain drip.
Yeah.
So when you see how many complaints are, we may see that we need to add it to the flow.
I don't, I don't mind. I mean, she hasn't gotten to mine yet, so that's why I'm, I'm asking if it's called an unfunded mandate or is there a more man or woman power that's wanted to be added to, or, you know, to, to, to make this work, we ordered for.
Well.
Instead of just adding paper.
Like the one, the one that I had, you know, that I spoke of at the beginning of the meeting, you know, the letter that fell, that's been going on for quite some time. You know, obviously the noise is only a problem in the summer, even have a problem in the winter.
Sure.
You know, so things go on and I know just the one I referenced, the two forty-six Hall of Road, that came, that complaint came back in February. Or finally get in court. So these things, everybody needs to really understand, nothing that happens with zoning happens overnight.
No, no, I'm aware of that, yeah, I'm, you're aware of that, and that, that's what's probably like, what.
And, you know, and then we prioritize as well, so if it's just, you know, my, my neighborhood's feeling chipping paint, you might come behind it. You know, the serious health hazard or something like that.
Yeah.
And, and we'll see. I mean, I, I don't know. Some days I walk into the zoning office and say, what else do we have to do here? Because we, we get backed up. I mean, if you see the reports at the end of the week, they're I think over there, I think last week, fifty-four or five different complaints
Um, yeah.
about a property maintenance or ordinance issues, that we couldn't do anything. But, but there are people that are upset enough that they're sending pictures, they're calling sometimes every day. We need to do something, we need to do something, but our hands are tied. So now this gives a little bit more oomph behind when we make that phone call or send that letter. We'll see how it goes. I mean, I don't want it to make, I don't want to make a profit generating things for the township. I wanna, I wanna, I, my ideal vision would be to send Judy or Myra or Vicki out with a list of things that have a tent, humanity, and the United Way to scale us. You need to speak to the persons, to say, listen, if you need help, here's some, here's your options. I'm not here to, you know, to find you, to take you to the magistrate next week or next month. Because that weighs on everybody, but uh, you know, I, I sort of have this vision, friendly. And zoning law just wants everybody to comply and get along with it, but, thank you.
Uh, is there any other public comment? Anyone? No one on Zoom? Uh, motion to adjourn? Favor?
Alright.
Thank you, everybody. Thanks so much for going over. Thank you.